The Race for Fate City Council is heating up and I have both candidates for place two. I'm Bunker Bob Steinhegen and this is a special edition of The Bunker Bob Show. Yes, it's a special edition of The Bunker Bob Show and I have both candidates for Fate City Council, place two, right here in studio. And actually, what you're seeing is a little bit of an optical illusion because I had both candidates come into the studio separately, answer the questions that I'm going to be posing on this show today. And then through the magic of video, I'm presenting both of them at the same time. So it looks as though they're in studio at the same time, but they're not. The reason I do it this way is to allow both candidates to put their best foot forward. The idea here is to give substantive answers to questions and give both candidates as much time as they wish to answer these important questions for Fate City Council. I've given both candidates the questions in advance of today so that they had time to prepare and that there was nothing new and there's no gotcha portion of this, of this show. What I hope this does is make you a more informed voter for the December 19th City Council race. And this race is of course, a runoff for Fate, place two. There were three candidates in this race and the two top vote getters, because neither got more than 50% of the vote, are in a runoff. Now, the city of Fate saw more than 6,000 voters come out to vote for city council, which is going to prove to be the greatest voter turnout in the history of the city, primarily because this was part of the presidential election ballot, something almost never seen in Texas where a municipal race gets on the same ballot as the president. So most people in Rockwall County in Fate were coming out to vote for Donald Trump, which means that for this runoff, if we see a few hundred people come out to vote, that will be an incredible, incredible turnout. And that's what makes this race so important for those of you who are living in Fate and can vote, because your vote will have a massive impact on the outcome of this race and on the place three race. And of course, Christopher Ash was interviewed as well and his opponent would not respond to our calls. So you, you can at least be informed about Chris Ash as well on place three. These two races, because there's going to be such a small voter turnout, your vote will have a profound impact. So take that in consideration. So the purpose of this is to make you an informed voter. So let's meet the candidates. The first candidate is Mr. John Brant. John, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, thanks for having me. First of all, I appreciate that. I've lived in Texas since 2009. I'm from Chicago originally, made my, I had some business opportunities in California and then those opportunities brought me to Texas. I became a businessman in Texas in 2011, though I moved here in 2009. And I bought my first home in 2015 in Wood Creek in Fate. I'm a small business owner. I'm a parent. My daughter's now 24 years old. And I'm a homeowner in, in Fate and happy to be here. I love Texas.
So you came here for, for business. So the question I have is obvious because Chicago, were you in, in the city of Chicago? Is that where you?
I was.
Okay. So why not, why, why didn't you move to more Dallas? Why did you choose a more of a rural kind of community, if you know what I mean?
Taxes have a lot to do with things, you know, opportunities, you know, there's small businesses like mine and others, you know, there's a fine line between jumping your tax bracket, if you will. You know, being a small business, you're a small business for a long time.
Yeah.
And people don't, I don't think enough people realize that.
Right.
They say, oh, you work for yourself. You write all the checks.
You pay all the bills.
Pay all the bills. That's right. And all of the requirements that are necessary to run a business, your insurance and all of that. And you have overhead and nothing is free these days and everything costs more money. So as a businessman, you have to look at opportunities that will be for the future of your business, to expand your business, but not just your business. If you have a business that people rely on, you want to make sure that their cost of living, you know, goes hand in hand with the wage that they're earning as well. So lots of care, lots of variables and things to consider, but Texas has seemed to be that way. And as far as an exodus of people moving here, I don't want anybody to California, my Texas either. You know, or my newly found Texas, you know, but, but again, I'm open to hearing other people's ideas. And if they can, you know, respect the, the land as, as they find it and with an idea of leaving it better than they found it, that's, that's all I can hope for.
Very good, John. Great to have you on the show today and thank you for being here. All right. Well, the other candidate, your name is Merle Jake Jacobson, but you go by Jake.
Right.
And you're going to be on, on the ballot, you're Merle Jake Jacobson.
I'm in slot number one.
So tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I grew up in South Dakota and born in 1947. I have, I had one sister and two brothers. Now I'm down to one brother. And I was a baby of the family. I'm nine years younger than everybody else. And South Dakota is really cold. So I went to high school and got out of there in 1965. I knew I had to get out of there and the only way I was going to get out of there was going to military. So I was waiting for, I waited for the air force recruiter and he didn't come. The day he came was the day I walked out the door to join the Navy.
I'll be.
And I went in the Navy and went to boot camp and I found out what Michigan's like. That wind coming off Lake Michigan is just unreal.
Just like Texas, only different, right?
Oh, no. Only worse. Only worse.
You know, it's funny because by the way, we, there, we have something in common. On June 10th, I was born, June 10th, 1969, I was born and something else happened in June of 1969.
I got in the Navy.
You got out of the Navy. That's right. How about that? So are you going to, like Ronald Reagan, not use your opponent's youth and inexperience against, against him? Because I know that, I know that one of the things we talked about a little bit is that you're a fan of Ronald Reagan. You actually were present when Reagan made his announcement for president.
That's correct. And when he re-announced, I grabbed my two sons, my two older sons and my neighbors and we went down there and we got some good seats. And the second time we got some good seats, you know, kind of good.
Yeah.
But it was interesting, you know, seeing them. I never saw him up close any other time. If you ever get to California, go see his museum.
I have. I've been at Thousand Oaks, California. I've been there. I had a client in Thousand Oaks. So I never missed an opportunity. Every time I was there, I always went to the, to the Reagan museum. That's where Air Force One is. And it is a quite a good museum, you know. So, so you came from the Navy, you went to California. That's why you were able to see Reagan.
Yeah, I was stationed in California on the ship and then met my wife.
Okay.
And that was a big draw, you know, and we got married and then we started out in Torrance. I don't know if you know where that is, in a little town by Redondo Beach.
Okay.
And then we moved from there to Anaheim, which is three miles from Knott's Berry Farm and three miles from Disneyland.
Wow. In Orange County?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Finally got tired of going to Disneyland. We just take the tram, go there and get the chicken dinner and then come back home.
You know, what's, what's unusual about you from what most people have as, as an impression of Californians is really focused on themselves, but you actually, you and your wife have nine kids.
Right.
You now have 30 grandkids. And so you guys were, were very family focused.
I got the best family in the whole world. I'll tell you that, you know.
You've been married 50 years.
50. Well, yeah, 50 years. That does that. And just, this pretty hair I got, used to be blonde and no more. But our youngest one is 27.
27.
And he moved out here and lives in Rockwall and.
Several of you, you've got, you've got three or four kids, four kids that live here in the Rockwall Fate area. And you also have several grandkids that live in this area. 14. Wow.
And it's, it's fun, you know, you get to, the thing that's really neat, you get to watch your kids raise their kids and see if they pass on anything that you taught them.
Yeah. Now tell me why you moved to Texas as from California.
My son has a business in Garland. He's our second youngest son. And he went and talked to his mom one day and he says, we're moving to Texas and we'd like you to move there too. And she told me, okay, we put our house on sale, sold our house twice in two weeks. And then we were out here.
I'll be.
There was some hate and discontent in the family.
Yeah.
That we moved so quick and didn't ask permission. We don't ask permission. We just did it.
Yeah. All right. Jake, why don't you tell us why you're running?
I want to do something to help the committee, the community. We need to have something like that. It's okay to complain. It really is. But if you don't have, if you complain and you don't have a fix, then keep your mouth shut. I'm a firm believer in that. If you want to complain, go ahead. But what would you do to fix the problem? When I was in Edison, I'd have this one guy come in and tell me all the time what was wrong. And I said, well, fix it. He says, no, that's your job. I said, no, I'll tell you what, you fix it. And if it goes bad or anything, I'll take a hundred percent credit for it. I'll never mention your name. And he chickened out. I said, then you're part of the problem then.
So you're a doer. Okay. John, how about you? Why are you running?
So to be able to, you know, be a voice for, for, you know, the entire community, I think that that's important. And I think it's, it's important to carry that, those concerns that we have from our neighbors to the council. So it's not just about the day to day operations and investor relations and, and, you know, building, but the fundamental needs and, and concerns of the community.
All right. Well, what do, what do you see as the city council's primary responsibility?
Well, I think representing the people first and foremost, you know, we have people in place in the city that are qualified, qualified to run the day to day activities. You have your city manager and secretary. And we have of course, the city attorney and we have to have a strong, you know, police force, DPS and sergeant, you know, or the chief, you know, definitely is doing a good job there. But it's important to represent the community.
Jake, how about you? What do you see as the city council's primary responsibility?
Okay. What I see is the role and responsibility is, is number one, they, they've got to start getting more input from the people. When we go to the city council meeting, there are probably 25, 30 people there. And then people need, well, they showed on, on the internet, but I haven't seen it there. But they need to have the people involved and they need to have people involved that have a real reason, rather than, oh, you didn't do this for me. And oh, the water ran wrong and all that stuff. It's important that they, they take the input. You're not going to use it all the time. They have to realize and understand that. But the, the important thing is that people buy into the thing. You know, I wasn't so sure about the new downtown buildings, but now I've been there and had ice cream. I like it.
Well, we all like ice cream. That's, that's a good reason to have it, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, as a, as a city council member, who do you see as your primary constituent? And how do you intend to make sure that you are listening to their concerns? Jake, how about you?
My primary constituent will be the people that voted me into office. I will ask their opinions. They will definitely give me their opinion, whether they want to or not. I'm a little leery about getting great friends with the developers. The town we moved from, they got really good friends with them and the developers were writing what the city was going to be like.
The council members became very good friends with developers.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
And when we moved to that city in California, we were at 20,000 people. That's what we are in Fate. When we left there, it was 120,000 people. But again, you know, with those things. And then I was on HOA board for 20 years. Some people say that's a bunch of crap, you know, that you don't need to, that's not a good thing. It is.
Right.
If you do it right.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we got sidewalks and we did fences and things like that, that the public, or that, that our association wanted.
Yeah.
And that's what it's all about, like in, in being a councilman. You got what the people want. You know, some of them are going to be a little bit out in left field, but most of the time you can help them out. You know, say, okay, if we don't do this, what would you like for a second choice? You know, give them some choices and give them, have them give you the choices. It's important to do that.
John, what do you think?
Thank you. My primary constituent is definitely the residents of, of the city of Fate, first and foremost. Homeowners like myself. I'm not a politician. I'm approaching this office as a fellow resident homeowner and a small businessman. But I think the concerns of the people that actually live here come first. And, and I think businesses respect that. I think businesses know when they come into an area, they do all of their due diligence and they want to make sure that their business is going to be welcome. You know, shoe stores not going to come into a place if people don't buy shoes in that area, you know, enough.
Thank you. That's good. Do you, do, do you attend city council meetings? And if so, how often? John?
I do. I attend city council meetings regularly. This year has put a damper on, you know, a lot of the, you know, face to face interactions.
Yeah.
But even last year before the pandemic, I was taking advantage of the online streaming. So the city of Fate has a really good program. They're in real time, you know, you can stream the meetings at home. So if I don't attend the meeting in person, I will watch it online. And the few occasions I haven't caught it online, I definitely update myself with the, you know, with the agendas, the minutes. And I'll give a shout out to some of the council members on, on the board now. They're very good about social media updates, you know, weekly or bi-weekly. They also hold town hall meetings occasionally. So I try to stay as well informed as possible.
All right. How about you, Jake? Do you, do you attend city council meetings pretty regularly?
I do. And after I broke my femur, I had the unlucky thing as I was sitting in the front row and I stood up, I had a plan. They didn't have seat, arms on the seat. So I said, okay, I'll have my cane here and grab here. I did that and I fell down in front of 30 people. But luckily there was like three paramedics, because everybody in the police department is a paramedic.
Yep.
And they got me up and going. So then I, I've been talking to the city manager a lot because he invited us in to give his, you know, what the city's like.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times you don't know what it's like. And he spent like two hours with me. And I think he did that with the rest of the people too. But he said, when you come in and you just give me a nod and we get your chair with two arms.
Do you feel like the city council is doing a good job?
I do. I, sometimes I get a little questioning on, and I won't mention names or anything. I think that would be inappropriate. But sometimes I think, okay, you know, you're here to do something besides fill a seat. But I won't mention any names. That, that would kill me.
How about you, John? Do you think the city council's doing a good job of representing constituents?
I think it's a difficult job.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that they are doing a good job, you know, for, for what they have, you know, at their availability. And, you know, I think a lot of people also, you know, and this is true, probably more so on social media. You know, people are concerned and residents are concerned, people that live in Fate. But I think some of their concerns are, are misguided. For instance, someone might say, we really need to have a stoplight at this intersection. But what they don't know is that intersection isn't controlled by Fate. Maybe it's controlled by the Texas Department of Transportation. So maybe it's a state issue. It doesn't mean that local officials can't get involved and speak on behalf of the residents, but a lot of that, you know, concern and disdain, if you will, sometimes is misdirected towards the city council. So I think sometimes they don't get a fair shake. It's a very difficult position to be in. I mean, we have a, Fate is going on about 18 to 20,000 people arguably.
Yep.
And that equates to about 5,800 or so utility accounts. Okay. Which is how the city kind of guides, you know, their, their forecasting for various things. So out of those 5,800 homes, you know, or 20,000 residents, you know, some are kids obviously, but out of the eligible people to run, you got two people on the ticket. So it's not a very popular position. You know, we don't have hundreds of people going after this job. I wish we did.
You are in a runoff though.
I am in a runoff. So we had three.
Yeah, you had three. So there was more interest.
There was. We had three. Now there's two. But it, wouldn't it be nice if we had 30 people, you know, clamoring for the job? I mean, it's a, it's not a, it's not a very glamorous position. But I think that given the opportunity, you know, we can make a change as residents, you know, together. And, and I think we can keep everybody in mind, including businesses.
Okay. Very good. You know, I think one of the most important questions that I'll, I'll ask today is this one. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing Fate? John, I'll start with you.
Well, it's going to, it's going to be growth. It's going to be growth and it's going to be the price of growth. You know, nobody wants higher taxes, including myself. And I'm a firm believer in, I don't believe in raising money just to spend it. But we are going to have some challenges. And as we grow, so are the needs of the, the city. We're going to need more DPS and we're going to have to pay for that. We, we, you know, on some of the roads that we do control, we need to maintain those roads and make sure that we, you know, just at the most recent council meeting, there was some talk about a program that might help us alleviate some of the concerns on a, you know, bad, worst, terrible scale of repairs, you know, for roads, for instance. So we're just going to have challenges. But one thing that I'm finding is a common, a commonality, regardless of our age, is that when you run a city, you're faced with challenges all the time. So it's, it's how you approach these things, you know, and it's the people that you put in place to approach them, to get these things done. Not easy decisions, not an easy job, but we're always going to have challenges. I don't see a day where we don't have something that we need to come together and, and figure out how to, how to attack together.
Very good. Jake, biggest challenges?
Biggest challenges of facing Fate is number one, you gotta deal with the population that's coming in. They're saying that it could be up to 30,000 within five years and I don't doubt it. But the ones that are going in Williamsburg right now, those homes down close to I-30, those things are huge. It just, I thought I was happy with 2,500 square feet, but they're huge. And you gotta get the roads. And nobody seems to be working on the roads. You know, the, the complimentary thing is TechDOT's got it. Well, let's get TechDOT driving the road then, you know?
So what do you think, you know, TechDOT is, is a state, is a state agency. So how does, how does a city council have any impact on the state agency?
Well, they, they talk to them, but I don't really know. I'm not in the background on that. But I, I'm a firm believer that you have to have the roads. I mean, I challenge you to come out one morning on 551 before it goes into I-30 and get there about 7:30 in the morning. And then you get to the road probably about 25 or 30 minutes later.
Yeah.
But I'm retired, so it doesn't bother me.
But it, but, but it's a concern of yours.
It is. They are going to add to it. I got some, I've seen some of the plans, but I don't know how long it's going to take. And then where the curve is on 551, there's going to be a development over there. And it's going to have some apartments and some smaller lots and things. Some people got pretty fired up about it. But now that it's happening, you don't hear anything. So it wasn't a continual thing of, we hate it, we hate you.
Right. Yeah. Is there a specific issue or set of issues on which you wish to focus if elected? Jake, what do you think?
Probably one of the main issues is getting business, small businesses into Fate. We need that. We, for five years now, I've been keeping Rockwall going single-handed and I've been keeping Roy City single-handed. I love the cities, you know? We don't think anything about driving to Greenville and finding a Mexican restaurant up there.
Right, right.
So it's, it's not that, but we need to have something there and we need to have something useful. Now, we're going to get a Mexican restaurant. Can't wait. And we got the ice cream place and we got some other, oh, Italian places coming in. I like that. I like that. I want to put my money into Fate. And even if I wasn't on the city council, I'd still do it.
So John, what do you think about that? Any specific issue?
Well, I think that the, the city is doing a very good job of continuing a trend of transparency and accountability. You know, and I think that they're educating the public as, you know, the best that they can. But I, I think that we need to start exploring new, new ways to engage the community, whether it be through social media or, or mailers, you know? And I know that those things cost money and I'm not trying to, you know, raise taxes to send you a letter. But I just think that if we can engage the public more, that would be a good thing.
So that'll be your focus?
I think so. I think continued accountability into, into the local government and accountability and transparency.
Very good. You know, the city of Fate just had their first open house regarding the comprehensive plan that we, we kind of talked about. And from your point of view, what do you like about it? Or are there things that the city could do better? John, what do you think?
Well, the comprehensive plan is, is just that. It is a comprehensive plan and idea of guidelines to carry the city and the representatives of the city through the next several years of development, commercially and residential as well. I think that it's a, it's an important step for the city to, to update it. Now, I think is a good time. I also like that they had a set number of people on the committee. And then they actually just recently opened it up for an additional four people to join that would actually be specifically residents in the community. So you have on this board, it's made up of some residents, but also business developers and investors.
Oh, wow.
So we want to make sure that we have an even representation. And it was someone on the city council that brought that up at one of the last meetings prior. And then this last meeting, they actually had, I think 18 people interviewed residents and they selected four of them. So I'd like seeing that we're, that's the transparency that I'm talking about. That's the accountability that I'm talking about.
Jake, when it comes to, when it comes to the, the comprehensive plan for the future of the city, how do you, how do you think that the people should be represented in, in developing that plan?
I think they should be invited to join it. Now, if they don't want to, that's their problem. But the other thing being is we have to have a comprehensive plan that's out five years, maybe 10 years and 15. It's not going to be, the 10 years is not going to be the detailed thing, but we need to have that. Otherwise, we're going to go wake up five years from now and go, holy cow, what messed up here?
Yeah.
You know, it's important.
Okay.
We need that.
Okay. How is the city of Fate informing citizens to encourage their involvement and is it working? Or, and what can you do to contribute or improve that effort?
Right now, the mayor pro 10, Dave Billings does a lot with that. And.
Yeah, he has a good Facebook group page.
It's really super. I mean, he keeps it going and lets everybody knows what's going on. Our mayor has been sick and so has kind of hindered his greeting part. But Billings is doing a fine job.
Yeah.
And he even talks to me. So I'm great.
Yeah. Well, John, basically you've already kind of answered the question about, you know, is the, is the city of Fate informing citizens to encourage their involvement? You're, you want to focus on, on bringing information to, to your citizens that, and so I'm going to move past that, that question because you pretty much already answered it. Well, what do you, where do you stand on the financial impact from, from, from the city assets upon the taxpayers? And do you see incremental tax increases ahead? Because you kind of alluded to the fact that there's growth coming. So.
Right. Well, and like I said, this is a constant. So I don't think that the tax, the tax question can ever be avoided. There's, there's, it's, it really, it's only a matter of time, quite frankly.
Okay.
So when do we do that? How do we do that? How much is it going to be? Why are we doing it? Do we have to do it now? I'm a firm believer, again, I said it earlier, I don't believe in raising money just to spend it. But I also believe that there's only so many ways that we can do or not do something. You can only get something done a number of ways. I will do everything that I possibly can to do it without asking for more money from the citizens, myself being one of those citizens. If we need money, we need money or we have to let something else go. So the, the quality of life and the standard of living that the people of Fate have grown accustomed to, I don't want to see that change. I don't think anyone else wants to either. So for the taxes, I'm not going to make any promises, but it's just a matter of time. And I just think we have to be smart about those decisions when they come up.
Jake, do you see a need for a tax rate increase? And if so, what would that, what would that go for?
Yes, we do. We need to do that because if.
We need to do what?
We need to have incremental tax increases.
Okay.
If you hit them, the one that was kind of hard was this budget for the, the thing for the park. Okay?
This is something that was voted on by the, by the citizens.
It made it through. But you have to have some idea of what you're going to do. And it doesn't. One time I was in a community and they, they wanted $22 million for the schools. But they wouldn't tell us what it was for. So it got voted down. And then the next time they added a couple of things to it and that got voted down. And one of the people that were pushing it said, well, why don't people vote for it? I says, because you're too arrogant and you won't tell the people what you're going to do.
Okay.
You have to have an open deal where you're talking to the people and they understand what the plan is and how we're going to do it. Another thing that I really firmly believe is that when. Uh, another thing that I really firmly believe is that when we hire a contractor, there needs to be some solid points. You will be done by X date and you agreed on this. If you aren't, you're gonna get penalized. So many times you get the, the contractors that go out there and, well, well, yeah, you know, it isn't, that, by the way, this other place is paying me more or whatever, but you need to have some penalties if they don't do what they're supposed to do.
So what are some of the valid reasons for tax rate increases?
Right now, tax rate, the, the ones that are waiting in the wings is to get more roads. Uh, you know, it's, people.
More roads or, or, or wider roads? What, what do you mean?
Both. We need both.
Okay.
And they, they need to be good and they need to, uh, when we moved out here, we didn't have the, uh, uh, five fifty-one, uh, off the freeway.
Yeah.
I love it. Except I'm retired, it doesn't matter. But here's the thing, you, you need to have an understanding of what you're gonna do and how it's gonna be handled and you need to have proper traffic lights and so forth. And that seems to be, uh, one time I was kidding a person, I said, what, you gotta have a kill factor before you get them in, you know?
What, what is that? What, what do you mean a kill factor?
How many accidents before, before you get the signals?
Oh, a light, okay, lights. Mm-hmm. Traffic lights.
You need to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, if you don't like it, you can go another route.
John, well, what are some of the things that would weigh in as a valid reasons to support a tax rate increase?
Well, um, recently there was a, there was talk about, um, you know, raising, raising taxes for various, or bonds, if you will, for the park.
Yeah, and that was on the, on the ballot, which was, that was, uh, something that the city fate gave to citizens, which is something as a conservative I prefer. So how do you feel about, about that when you, when you have to make those decisions?
Well, that decision was, um, we're, I, I imagine the city council is grateful. That decision was made for them.
Yes.
By the citizens on a ballot.
Yes.
Which isn't typical, as you know, not every decision or not every question that the city council has goes to ballot. This was a big one and I think when you look at the results of, of that.
Very close.
Very.
Very close.
Maybe a hundred?
Yes. Very, it was, it was, yes.
Uh, literally fifty-one, forty-nine.
Yeah.
You know, with, with some points trailing. So, um, it's, it's something like that. The people have spoken. Now, what do you do with the forty-nine and a half percent that didn't want that? They still are subject to pay that tax.
That's right.
To those people, I would say, you're gonna have a park that you can enjoy and because of that, most likely, as it's, has happened historically, at least, at the very least, the value of your home will increase.
So why do you think it was so close?
I think that there's a lot of people that feel that there's already enough going on in fate. There's already two parks here or, or a park there. There's already a new restaurant. There's already a new road. They're tired of seeing construction. I've, I've lived in, in fate since two thousand and fifteen and just, I live right off of sixty-six and Wood Creek.
Okay.
And right there on that intersection, there's construction. Bob, there's been construction there since I moved there in two thousand and fifteen. Now, they've made strides. I'm not saying that they're not doing anything.
Right.
It's a major, major undertaking. They, they have miles of road, you know, to, to construct and, and at various stages. It's fascinating to watch, but at the same time, I'm watching it in my car, waiting to get home, just like everybody else. So I think that, I think in general, people are kind of, kind of exhausted about developing, developing, growing, growing. And earlier I said that there will come a time, I believe, hopefully sooner than later, that they'll actually be able to drive down the street without a road construction flag and go to the local supermarket that is in fate and, and they'll start sensing that small community again.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's just, we're in a growth spurt right now, so that part of our challenge is just recognizing that. If we just, just like the Texas weather, if you wait five minutes, it will change.
Right.
You know, we just gotta wait, wait out the five minutes, maybe, might be seven minutes, but.
Yeah.
Gotta wait it out, just a little bit.
Do you support voters having the right to make those decisions?
Um, I, I do. I, I do. Uh, you know, I, I think that we can get ourselves into some sticky situations if we put everything to a vote. I think that is why we have established a city government and a city council and a mayor.
But I'm talking about where, where you have to raise tax, taxes, where you have to add funding.
Well, I mean, if you put a vote out there and ask every hundred people, should we raise taxes? I'm sure ninety-nine of them would say no.
But, but you just did a vote like that. You said, would you like to raise taxes? And then they said yes.
True, true. So I, I, you're right. So I guess it would depend on what you're raising the taxes for, which is what I alluded to earlier. If you're gonna raise taxes, it better be for a good reason.
Yeah.
You know, if you're gonna get a park, it better be a really nice park. You know what I mean?
Absolutely. You served on the Park and Recreation Committee. So, uh, tell me about, why was the vote so close?
I think that people, I don't know if they've seen their property tax yet, but if they've seen their property tax, that's probably why it was so close, because they're getting hurt on the property tax and, uh, there's nothing to stop that.
Right. So, uh, what do you mean they're getting hurt? You mean they're, they're being overtaxed?
Yeah, they, well, they're, they're, they're running out of money. They got the nice big house, they got a property tax and now you're gonna have this park thing show up that's gonna hit you again.
Right.
But a lot of the people don't go far enough to investigate, how long is that bond gonna be in place? What's it gonna achieve? And lay it out, what exactly it's gonna achieve? Because if you just kind of go, well, yeah, we're gonna make some parks. Well, what kind of park? I was on the committee that we drew up the park, how it was gonna be, and we were firm believers on the park board that we had to do it in slices. Uh, our main thing was to get children's playground and a bathroom. Uh, then we could go on from there. Uh, the overall project was gonna be quite big, but, uh, we were a firm believer in the fact that you divide it up, otherwise it's not gonna fly.
And then. So this is the first phase of multiple phases coming?
Yeah.
And so are those going to, those multiple, uh, subsequent phases, are those gonna be put before voters?
I don't think so.
Or is this, or is this all encompassing?
I think it's all encompassing, but I'm not sure.
Now, you, you, you and I are both conservatives. We're all conservatives. What, what, what I wanna, uh, hold your, uh, feet to the fire on is, I asked you about raising taxes. You said, yes, we need incremental tax rate increases, but you already said that, that people are already taxed too much. So how do you reconcile that?
Well, what you reconcile it on the fact is, number one, you have to prove that you need it. Not that it's gonna be pretty, not that it's gonna be all this other things. Uh, people.
So you're not saying that, 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 that you've, you, you think we have to have incremental tax rate increases? We need, you're saying that we need tax increases when there is a true need?
And they have to be incremental because of the fact, if you hit them with twenty-two million dollars, yeah, oh, that's gonna work.
I see. Okay.
You have to.
That makes sense.
You have to break it up to make it more edible, is what I would say.
Yeah, so, so you're not, so you're saying if, if there is a need for a tax rate increase, you don't wanna see a massive increase, you wanna see a small, i- i- it taken out in small bites.
Yeah.
And with the number of people that are coming into the city of fate, uh, that you're going to see a, a significant increase in your revenue, obviously.
Sure.
So, so that maybe helps you.
But one of the things that the people coming into fate doesn't drive up the revenue. The thing that drives up the revenue is the people that are in business because you need the property, sales tax to pay for your police department and things like that.
Okay.
But if, you know, we're gonna get, there's gonna be more money with the houses coming in and so forth, you know?
Yeah.
Building fees and stuff. Well, one of the things that, that I run across in my talking to people is that probably in five years, we'll run out of the, uh, building fees.
Do you really think you're gonna, I mean, the, the, the ma, the, the way fate is growing so quickly, it looks like you guys have another ten, fifteen, twenty years of growth ahead of you, no? You don't think so?
I don't think, not even close.
Not even close?
No, I, I think that there is a lot of land, but the fact remains is what they're gonna get, you know, what the prices of the houses are gonna be. You know, a lot of the, the thing like in Williamsburg and Wood Creek, those are beginner homes.
Right.
And then you move two doors down and then you got a real home.
Yeah. A real home.
But that's, that's the bottom line. You know, you, you start out small. We're starting out small.
Yeah. Um, are there propositions that you would like to see in the future for citizens to weigh in on? And if so, what would you consider?
I see the propositions that are next coming up are roads. Uh, road, road development. I think there's like three levels of them. Uh, I can't say exactly what they were, but I think there's three levels of them and those will be happening. And we need to have them in increments and we need to have it get done in a timely manner without tearing up, uh, the driving of people. People gotta get to work.
Yeah. All right, how about you, John? What, what propositions would you like to see citizens weigh in on?
Well, I mean, I, you know, the tax question is a great one to come back to. You know, we're, we're talking taxes all day.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I mean, it would certainly alleviate the pressure from the council and, and a lot of, um, you know, unwanted emails, I'm sure. Um, so maybe, maybe tax concerns, you know, might be something that the public, you know, should be more involved in. But again, I think it's, I, I, I think we have to make sure that we are, uh, informed accordingly, you know, as residents. I, I, you don't want people out there making decisions based on road construction that we don't have any part of those roads.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Sure.
So if you're gonna vote, be, be informed, you know, be an informed voter, be an informed resident, you know? And that is really what I think this all boils down to. It starts in the home, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, everything. I mean, it really does.
Yeah, good point. Well, all right, well, well, we have, we have gone through all of the questions, but I wanna give each candidate an opportunity to speak directly to you, the voter, about why each of them feels like they're best suited to represent you on fate city council. And I will start with Jake.
Well, it's to be the city councilman, I have a background. I served twenty years on the HOA board. Uh, we did a lot of things there and I was going between the treasurer and the vice president. And we did a lot of things that were good for the community. And, you know, again, sometimes the people don't like it, but you have to do it because it's for the goo, good of the community. Not good for Jake, not good for somebody else, it's good for the community as a whole. And that's the important thing. And then, uh, to be open to the people, to be able to talk to them, to go over things, their, their issues, uh, you know, if they got problems, uh, a while ago, we had problems with the trashmen and that went away and I have no idea how that happened. Because they decided that they weren't gonna pick up extra trash. Now they do. I don't know how that happened. So it's important, you know? Uh, like I prefer to have policemen going through my neighborhood. Uh, you know, come on, drive through, you know, see what we're going through and see if there's a problem. Feel free to write those tickets. Feel free to talk to those people. And I stop them in the street and talk to them and thank them for doing a fine job. And that's what it's all about. You, you wanna, you wanna make your workers feel good about themselves, you wanna make the, the community feel good about them. Just because they're workers, they're working for a salary. It doesn't necessarily mean that you can browbeat them anytime you want. And also you, you need to, as a city councilman, we have to go through the chain of command. You, you know, if we got a problem with something, uh, it's not right for a city councilman to go, you aren't doing it right. I wanna know why. It's, you need to go through your city manager and so forth. You, you need to follow a chain of command, just like we did in the Navy. So that's my thing is to, and I've got a background in it. I was in the Navy and, and, uh, at one point, we, they say, don't, uh, put all your key people in one watch section. Well, my chief decided we would. And, uh, he was an E-seven, then he had an E-six, then we had an E-five and I, I was an E-four. I wasn't in the inner circle of the command, but when all four of those guys wanted to take off, I was the guy. And I wasn't, I didn't go higher because I didn't wanna re-enlist. I wanted to go out and get married. And so, but I got to do things, you know, I had, we had a fire drill one day and they asked where everybody was at. Uh, they're getting haircuts, but I tell you what, uh, here it is. I'm here and we're good.
It's all yours, John.
Well, I appreciate it. Bob, thank you for having me. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to, uh, promote the wonderful city of fate and my passion and love for it. Uh, my concerns are the same as the concerns of the citizens of fate. I'm a homeowner. I'm a small businessman. I'm a parent. Uh, I don't believe in raising money just to spend it. I wanna fully supported and funded, um, DPS.